Call to order, the regular city commission meeting for March 16th, 2021. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Mr. Winningham, the first item up is the order of business. Is there any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. There is no change to the order of business.
Look for a motion on the order of business.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion on the order of business? Hearing none, all in favor of the order of business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Our next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll move right into administration and finance. First item up is monthly financial report. Mr. Maury.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Starting out with our revenue report at the end of February. With our 1% sales tax, the red line is for 2021 and the blue line is for 2020. So you can see February 2021, we're down about 222,000 from where we were in February of 2020. So that's about a 36% decrease in that collection. Two-month total, we're down 356,000 altogether, so about a 29% decrease total to start the year in our 1% sales tax.
Mr. Maury, that would be December's numbers, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Oderman. This next slide is exactly half of the previous slide that you just saw. And to Commissioner Oderman's point too, I should mention for the public as well that just as Commissioner Oderman stated, that these collections, when we receive them in February, it's what is submitted to the state in December. So submitted in December, filed in January, and then we actually receive the collection Moving on to our hospitality tax. In February, again on the red line, you can see we're down about 34,000 from where we were in February of 2020, so about a 40% decrease there. Two-month total, we're down about 48,000, so about a 28% decrease through the first In our occupancy tax collections, we're down about a little over 8,000, 38% decrease from the prior year in February. For the two-month total, we're down about 12,000 altogether, about a 26% decrease for In our oil impact revenue, so we collected 974,000 in February of 2021, down about 246,000 from February of the prior year, about a 20% decrease. Two-month total, we're down 513,000, which is a 21% decrease from the prior year. In 2020 altogether, we collected 11.2 million. If we take the average of those first two collections, we're projected to be at 11.2 million again in 2021. This next slide here is general fund revenue and expenses. This was as of last Thursday. So typically benchmark would be 16.7% through two months. So you can see we're a little ahead of schedule in general fund revenue, and that's just because of some transfers and things of that nature that we do at the beginning of the year. On our expense side, we're a little over 18% in general fund expenses through a little over two months, so pretty close to right on track with that benchmark. On the enterprise fund, on the left graph on the expenses, so again, 16.7% is the benchmark we're looking for. Enterprise fund expenses are at 15.32%. So we're under where we expect to be, which is good for our enterprise fund expenses. Enterprise fund revenue, we're just above that 16.7% benchmark, and we've collected 17.79% of our enterprise fund revenue. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury?
You know, Mr. Maury, this might be a question for Director Zurov, but, and I don't want to jinx us, knock on wood here, but how much money have we saved with the lack of snow removals here?
Um, I don't know, excuse me, Commissioner Oderman. I would say normally at this time, we would probably have expended at least 50,000 to 60,000 on salts and some other things, additional brine. It's hard to say because we have lots of years of been up and down, but we've had a general expenses of a couple hundred thousand plus for snow removal. So we're well under that from a couple of years ago, but I would say we're a hundred thousand dollars or under from salt, sand, salt for our brine making, cutting edges, fuel, all that. I haven't really put in all the pencil yet, but I know we're safe.
Like I said, I don't want to jinx us, so I won't belabor the point there.
I'm stuck with the snow.
Yeah, I'll play it for sure in July.
It's probably a good plan.
Mr. Maury, I see 48% of our receivables are 91 and over. What are we doing about that?
Yes, Commissioner Frederick. So we actually, everything that we have at DCI and also for collections right now is either still being paid on. So that 44,000, we had a $36,000 bill for one insurance claim that they're making monthly payments on. They just started making those payments, so they still owe 34,000 of the 36,000. So that one will be stuck on there, on that report for a little while until they can finish getting that paid off. That's really the largest one on that over 90-day report. Other than that, I mean, we just had a lot of smaller amounts too in our current, which, you know, raises that percentage as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Maury?
I'd move to approve the financial report.
We have a motion to approve the monthly financial report by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions for Mr. Maury? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mrs. Nomenek, you have the monthly HR report.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. First up on our report is the police officer positions. Currently, we have several positions open. There have been interviews, and two candidates have moved to the second interview phase and are, in the background, actually offers were made, so they are in the background. This brings me to some of the positions in the utilities department. We had opened an environmental pretreatment coordinator, a chief water reclamation facility operator, and then the utilities manager, kind of all at the same time. We didn't have much luck with the chief position, not much for minimum requirements for any of those candidates. We're kind of holding off on that for a bit. The environmental pretreatment coordinator, we did do a second interview with one candidate that may have been a good candidate for us. However, that person took a position elsewhere, so we kind of stopped on that position as well. And then we were kind of concentrating on our utilities manager. We did do a second round of interviews. Actually, it was just one candidate we brought. We didn't bring him in, but we did do a Skype interview due to COVID and just felt that, you know, there were areas that he would do really well, but not quite what we were looking for, for utilities manager. So we're kind of back to the drawing board on those positions. The deputy clerk of court, one position was opened and has been filled. That person is now working for us. We had a senior water utility operator that was opened internally and was filled with one of our water utility operators. I don't have this on here, but we did decide to open a senior water reclamation facility position internally due to losing our utilities manager and all the openings that we have there, and we did fill that internally with one of our operators at the reclamation facility. Engineering tech, we had an opening there, and that's been filled, and he has been working for us for a week or two already. Facility operator, we had an opening that was actually filled with an internal candidate, someone that worked in our street department. So that opened up a street operator position. We already had one open, so we are, actually, it's, we did do some interviews. We hired one person and weren't able to fill the other ones. We have the position open right now. I believe it closes today. Property appraiser technician, we had open for a little while here and were able to fill it. That person has already started for us as well. The bookmobile, school services librarian was open off and on and was a real tough one for us to fill. They decided now to open it up internally, and we did fill it with one of our limited hour employees. So he has taken on that role. Water utility operator, we did have one opening there, which would have been the person who took the senior utility operator, kind of a domino effect, and we are, that is an offer pending for that person. And then we opened up two solid waste laborer positions rather than the operator position. We had really good interviews there and made two offers. In the meantime, we lost one of our operators in solid waste, so we were able to make three offers out of that interview round that we had. So we'll be able to fill all of those right away, which will be really nice. And then we are busy working on opening all of our seasonal positions, so all of them, pretty much all of them should be posted right now. We've got a good number in buildings and grounds. I believe eight people were going to be hiring there. Buildings and codes, we'll hire one. Museum, we'll be doing some interviews tomorrow for the museum. Engineering is going to hire one, and then forestry and street department. So we've got a good number of seasonal openings to fill, so hoping that a lot of those college students will start thinking about it while they're on spring break here. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the HR report? Hearing none, we'll move on to public safety, and this evening we have a report from the police department. Chief Dossinger, you have the monthly report.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Tonight I'm presenting the February monthly report for the Dickinson Police Department. For the month, we responded to 1,643 calls for service. The top five monthly calls, excluding accident-related calls, were 63 calls related to suspicious person or vehicle. There were 56 calls related to requests to speak with an officer, 50 welfare checks completed, there were 48 warrants served, and 41 parking complaints responded to. We did respond to 59 accidents for the month compared to 67 for last year's timeframe. We did have one injury-related accident compared to three last year for this timeframe, and 18 hit-and-run accidents that we responded to. There were a total of 347 total traffic stops made, there were 183 warnings issued, and 117 citations issued. The top five cited traffic violations, speeding led to list with 31. There were 20 citations issued for no liability insurance, 17 citations issued for failed registered motor vehicle, 13 care-required citations issued, and seven stop sign violations Arrests made for the month, warrants led to the top of the list with 49 arrests, followed by drug-related arrests with 21, and DUI-related arrests with 12. There were 67 total calls for service related to behavioral health calls, 50 welfare checks were completed, eight mental health-related calls, two intoxicated subjects in which their welfare check was requested on, and seven suicidal threats that we responded to for the month. CIU unit, we're involved in 33 investigations for the month. Five of those incidents involved after-hour callouts with three requiring multiple detectives. There were several major investigations for the month that were conducted, including aggravated assault, stabbing, and a felon in possession of a firearm and a fugitive apprehension. There was six firearms that were recovered and identified, believed to be in possession of people who were prohibited to possess them. And there was numerous hours of surveillance, containment of search warrants, and crime scene efforts were part of the previously listed investigations. Training for officers, three officers completed a decentralized command training, two officers attended a toxilizer training in Bismarck, one officer attended criminal patrol tactics in Bowman, and two officers completed a women-in-command course. Our PSAP center, or our dispatch center, answered 4,534 non-emergency calls, they answered 656 911 calls, and had outgoing calls of 1,136 calls. Currently, our dispatch center, we do have one dispatcher retiring at the end of March, one expected to complete the FTO training in May, and one in the background process with hopes to be hired by the end of March. We are interviewing to fill three additional spots at this time. Dispatch center is currently working on updates to the training process for incoming trainees and preparing for additional radio upgrades this summer as part of the Siren program. Our animal shelter, animal control impounded 31 dogs, five were released to rescue organizations, 23 returned to their owners, and three remain at the shelter at this time. There were 16 impounded cats, eight released to rescue groups, two returned their owner, and six remain at the shelter. Kind of a breakdown for calls of service. As you can see, there were 36 impound-related estrays, nine surrenders, and a total of one bite call, animal that was taken in as per regarding a bite, so a total of 47 animals that were taken and impounded. As you could see, running at large was our most popular call for service regarding an animal call. And picture there, you can see that those are our most recently upgraded and installed dog doors as part of our dog kennel upgrade for the animal shelter. So that was kind of a quick rundown of our activity for the month, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Chief Dossinger on his monthly report?
Mr. President.
Mr. Oderman.
So Chief Dossinger, just comparing this month's numbers to last month's, in the behavioral healthcare category, you know, January had 65 calls, in a shorter month in February it's 67. Is that something that you guys see increasingly trending upwards?
It's pretty consistent, and speaking for the beginning half of this month, we have definitely been involved with a lot of behavioral health-related calls. So it's consistently slowly growing. It's not a problem that's going away anytime soon in our community.
Are there any other questions for Chief Dossinger? Hearing none, we'll move into public works. First item up, public works, our annual land lease agreements. Public Works Director Zurov.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. I have two land leases that are done annually. The first one is for 177 acres. This parcel is west of the water reclamation facility. We rotate parcels each year. So last year was 111 acres, this year it's 177 acres on the west side, and then we rotate our biosolids injection rotating those two parcels. So this year, the one releasing is for the west, 177 acres, and it's with Mr. Randy Hondal for $38 acre for a total rent of $6,740.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on this land lease? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the land lease.
I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a second land lease. Mr. Zurov?
President Decker and Commissioners, the second one is an annual lease that stays the same every year. It's 112 acres that was discussed earlier today. It's joining the cemetery and the fire training center. It's that parcel that the city owns in that area. It's estimated 112 acres, and that again is leased with Mr. Randy Hondal for $38 acre. Recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this land lease? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Zurov, you have a task order for us.
Yes, thank you. This is our annual task order we have with currently at Houston Engineering for groundwater monitoring and sampling at the landfill. The sampling and preparation of the annual groundwater report that's submitted to Department of Environmental Quality. The task order is in your packet. This task order includes engineering services and also includes the estimated fee of MBTL, the laboratory that does all our sampling. Again, this is our annual task order. If you have any questions, we'd like to answer. It is in our solid waste annual operating budget. I would recommend.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this task order? This is task order 21-01. Hearing no questions from Mr. Zurov, I'd look for a motion on this task order. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up, we have a compact loader bid, and that'll be handled by solid waste recycling manager, Mr. Prowse.
Good morning, or good morning, good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners.
Did I fall asleep?
Might have. Either that or I'm waking up. This is for compact loader quotes that we received from three local vendors here in Dickinson. They were open on Wednesday, March 10th. Public Works staff is recommending approval of the low bid from Titan Machinery for a case 221F. After trade-in, the price would be $72,500. Example of the loader, or picture of the loader that we're looking to purchase is on the screen. This is replacing our 2013 906 H2 cat loader that has met our terms for fleet replacement to maintain an efficient fleet of equipment. We did have this budgeted in our 2021 capital for 135,000 over a five-year lease.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse on this agreement on compact loader?
I just got to say, Mr. Zurov, staff's doing a really good job on these bids.
Thank you.
Mr. President and Commissioners, I'll just add one thing. So as part of the culture for the city and for staff, this was a good news story that they extended the life on their current compact loader. So that was a, there was a break in the front of that loader, and it was rewelded. So they extended the life probably, I don't know how many years, but it was a safety issue, but it was approved for use, and that's in the recycling building. So how many years did you extend the life of that piece of equipment?
That was a recent break. It happened maybe six months ago or so, but this was an item that we kept moving down our operating line until that occurred, then we figured it was time to move forward with a new machine, so.
So good use of their ability to extend the life, even though, you know, this was already budgeted, but that's the kind of thing that we want to do as a city to reduce operational costs, is try to extend the life of all of our equipment, which means take ownership of it. The equipment still worked, and we did have a safety inspection, so it's good that they were able to take that back as a, with the trade-in value. So thanks for that, Mr. Prowse.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Prowse? Look for a motion on this compact loader bid.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not quite to the 5:00 for the...
It's the last thing we got.
Yeah. So I'll just bump it over to public comments, not on the agenda. If there are anybody in the audience that wishes to come up and talk about items not on our agenda, or just have something they need to make Commissioners aware of, please come forward, state your name. If you are watching online, you can call in at 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Does anyone from the public have any items they wish to discuss? Please come forward, state your name. Again, if you're watching online, you wish to call in and speak to the commission, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one has called in, or anyone in the chamber here has any issue to discuss, we will move into the public hearing and public comments that are on our rezoning of Cooks Meadow Hills Fourth Edition. Planning Director Hadley will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance 1710. It's a zone change from a lot 2C Block 6, Cooks Meadow, Fourth Edition, from R1 to R3. As you can see on the screen, during first reading, it's a split-zone lot that was created under irregular plat, unbeknownst to everyone involved. It was kind of a cleanup issue. Staff hasn't received any comments since the last city commission meeting at first reading, and staff would recommend approval of ordinance 1710 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this rezone? Hearing no questions, we'll go ahead and go to the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak... from the public that wishes to speak to this rezone in Cook's Meadow Hills Fourth Edition? Please come forward, state your name. Let us know what your concerns are. Anyone from If you're watching online and you wish to call in, again, the number is 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Anyone from the public have any comments on the Cook Meadow Hills Fourth Edition Anyone from the public? Seeing there's no one in the chambers that has any comments, no one online, close the public hearing, Commissioners, I'd look for a motion on ordinance 1710.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve 1710 by Commissioner Soboluk. Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Soboluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda this evening. Commissioners, do you have any items you wish to discuss, bring forward to the public? This is your time.
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
You know, in light of some of the news in the last week, it might be worthwhile for us as a commission to discuss, you know, potential ideas or plans in regards to, and I'm speaking specifically to the new development up in Williston, where new hospital, new clinic. And they've invested a lot of money in their community in the last several years. And I know we're very debt-conscious here in Dickinson, but with the reality of things going on at the legislative session, this session, and the potential with maybe some funding mechanisms, additional funding mechanisms coming from the state, I think it's important for us to maybe talk publicly about, is it a good idea to take on some lower-expense debt in order to get some things done for the city in the short term for long-term growth?
Well, I think we have plenty of projects that we could definitely justify taking on if that mechanism is approved. It's bonding bill for the Commissioners and for the public that legislature's talking about, long-term, financed over 40 years at low interest. I think we're in a good position with our CIP and a lot of the projects that we do have ready to go because we can make a, if we're gonna have to compete against for dollars. And speaking with our legislators, they have said that they were hoping for more money to be in this bonding bill, but there are members of the House that are chopping away at how much is actually gonna be in there. So we are gonna have to compete for some of those dollars to, if a lot of these cities are gonna go after those dollars, they're gonna basically parse it out. So I think we're sitting in a good position, but I do agree with you. If we can get money over 40 years, and we're talking legacy-type projects that we're going to put into place that are gonna last for 40, 50 years, then why wouldn't we borrow that money? Especially when it's at a low interest rate.
Well, and the reason I bring this up is because, you know, for the last several years, I mean, I think you hear people talking about, hey, you know, why did Williston get this, and we don't get something like that. And, you know, Williston is also, I mean, they've gone into significant debt in order to enable that, those things to happen. And maybe that's something that we need to think about. I mean, a 1% to 2% interest rate is pretty attractive. I mean, this is probably the cheapest money you're ever gonna see.
I think, and Mr. Winningham, you can help me, our discussions with the, on the legislative call-ins, I think they were talking at 2, 2.5 is where that bonding bill's gonna be at, 2.5 for 40 years.
That's correct. Two and a half or so.
Right. But the length is what's extraordinary about this whole. You tend to not get 40 years to pay it back. So I do think it is something that Commissioners should think about, project-wise. I know I have a list. I would like to, when we go to our retreat, have that discussion. And one of the things, just what Chief Dossinger brought up in his report, that I think we really need to look at, because we are not getting any assistance from the state, we have to do something in behavioral health territory. And I think that's something we can partner with Stark County on, and maybe even some of the other counties that are close, that if we can utilize some of the space already that exists, like possibly the old hospital, if there's a ward there that hasn't been developed, we can possibly go into that and help out at least a group that wants to come in. Because there are, there are parameters that are set forth by the federal government on reimbursement that it makes it a challenge for a group to come to Dickinson. So I think at one point, we do have to have that discussion with Stark County, and what are we gonna do here to help out our citizens in that behavioral health arena? So. But I would encourage that, you know, Commissioners, think about some of the projects that are on the CIP list, what could be the, what could we do, behavioral health, some of the other things that might come to mind. I know we had an initial plan drawn up by our prior city engineer to complete 15th. And I know I've talked to Commissioner Frederick about this. Even if we just connect 15th over to 30th with a rural, right now, we don't do gutter and sidewalk. It's just a rural connection, much like 21st used to be.
Yeah. I mean, you see that. A lot of cities on their, you know.
Right.
And once it starts to develop and they finish developing the road or whatever, but...
You know, just little things like that that could just make the city flow a little bit better. Look at, you know, some of the other outliers to infrastructure that we could improve. I know he kinda gamed that a little bit, master-planned it, that area over there. So I think we have a ton of projects. I don't think we have a list that is lacking.
Well, but like you say, I mean, I think it's an important conversation to have because there might be a competitive aspect to that somewhere down the line, so.
I think we are gonna compete, especially if they put the cap on that. Like I said, I had the discussion with a legislator, and if there is a cap on it, there is going to be a lot of competition for a limited amount of money. I hope they bump it up a little bit. I think it's a great idea with the legislation is to invest our own money, our oil money, in our state. I mean, it just makes sense. But now immediately, you have individuals that wanna cap that. And this could be a long-term investment across the state if they would open that up a little bit. And I would encourage the public to call our legislators, let them know that this is something that we would support, so.
We've been pretty fiscally responsible with our debt here, you know, for the growth, but, I mean, there's projects that we probably could get off the ground that, you know, if we did borrow a little bit of money, it wouldn't really impact us much. And it would be a great benefit to the city. And I mean, they're all value adds, I mean.
And the reason I bring this, I brought this up is because I've had people, over the course of the last week, ask me, hey, are we missing the boat on some things where Williston is making these large investments, but long-term, are they gonna be better off than maybe we are with our conservative approach because they made that investment and went into debt? I mean, it's, I think maybe it's more of a philosophical discussion than it is like, you know, hard and fast, hey, this is what we're gonna do. But I think these are all things that we have to ask ourselves in order to make the best decisions that we can, so.
And to staff, if there's anything, when we go to this retreat, if there's anything that's pressing that sticks out, please bring it forward for us too, so that we can address that also.
It'll be interesting to see what restrictions they put on it.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of asks, you know. We've got the sports complex ask coming soon. We've got a lot of asks that, you know, hockey wants another rink. I mean, there's a lot of things that people are looking to us to help get funded, you know. And we've always kinda just, if we have the money, we make it work. But I mean, if we could borrow some money at a decent rate and get some of that, those projects off the ground, the quality of life aspect of it alone is worth it. So, and they're good projects. All that stuff brings more people to town, and eating our restaurants, staying in our hotels, and, you know.
Spend money.
That's right.
Anything else, Commissioners? There's nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. So I'll move.
Second.
We are adjourned.